Of Mayor and Council, this Tuesday, June 8th of 2021, Council will stand in session. Let's go to roll call. Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Santa Cruz. Mr. Cunningham. Ms. Uli. Mrs. Lee. Mr. Fimbres. Mr. Kozakic. Mayor Romero.
Item two. Thank you, Mayor.
Dear God, thank you for bringing us to this meeting today. We pray for the government officials gathered here. That you guide the mayor and council as they make decisions that will affect the lives of the city of Tucson residents. Grant them wisdom to make the right decisions without bias or prejudice. We pray that the mayor and council members work together to improve the quality of life of all affected by their decisions. Amen.
Thank you so much, Yolanda. Item two C.
Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions.
City manager's communication number 162 dated June 8th is received and made part of the record. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Hearing none, let's go to item three.
Mayor and council report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 163 dated June 8th is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. These are to be current events of activities within the community, not position statements on policy issue. Issues, does any council member have anything to report at this time? And we'll just go down the line. We'll start with Ward one and then move up. The ward numbers. So council member Santa Cruz.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I think I'm making my. Just my announcement with my background today, just that we're celebrating Pride Month. You know, in June 2021, and just to acknowledge, you know, all the work. For, you know, the past decades and years, you know, to get us to this place and that. You know, it came from a lot of the work. As early as, you know, the twenties and the thirties, but really the sixties and seventies to get us to this place and that we still have a lot of work. Ahead of us to bring justice to LGBTQ plus communities. So just, you know, acknowledge the work and we have a ways to go. Thank you.
Council member Cunningham.
Yes, Your Honor, I just wanted to. Thank TFFA Local 479 for hosting another successful. Firefighters Ball, Firefighters Weekend, giving out a new. Given out the Forged by Fire Award, which is terrific. And they've, it's a, it's an amazing event for Tucson. It actually draws most of the firefighters around the state to come stay at a Tucson hotel. And I was, I was honored to be a part of it this week. Also, I'd really like to thank the Arizona Bowl. The city of Tucson, our local sponsors, the Viscount Hotel. Arco Storo, which is Roger Canchola's McDonald's, Jim Click. HSL. Volpi Nova Home Loans, all those different entities combined. And we had ninety senior football players, many of whom only got to play two games this year. Get to play a community-wide football game at Tucson High on Friday night. I want to thank coaches Dennis Benet and Nimer Hasi, Ollie Farhang and Kim Adair and Del Arvao from the Arizona Bowl. It was probably one of the, it was a really great experience and I'm really proud of the kids. A young man named Eli Lovett won the MVP. And a young man from, from the, from Ward two, Trevion Watkins scored the game's only touchdown. So for me, it was really exciting. And it, if the eighteen-year-olds that I got to meet at that football game Friday, along with my own son, who graduated this year, are any indication the type of future we have, it's pretty bright. And so I'm really proud to have been a part of that. And I want to thank all the community members, Keith Regina. Just all the community members who just contributed to this, to make this happen. It was an amazing event. And this council, along with the TOSD Board, stood up and helped make it happen. And it was an experience that all those kids will take with them. They'll say, you know, that year, that COVID year, we kind of lost out, but our community came together and put something on special for us. It was, it was amazing.
And thank you, council member, for your hard work in making that possible and making that real for so many seniors. And their families. So well done. And thank you for doing that for everyone. Council member Ulik.
Thank you, Mayor Romero. The Ward three team and I would like to invite business owners and stakeholders in the O5 area to join a virtual business forum on Monday, June 14th from four to five P M. Folks will be able to connect with the local thrive in the O5 businesses and hear updates from the City Department of Transportation and Mobility. About road construction and other mobility projects in the thrive in the O5 area. Including updates on construction projects on Oracle Road and Miracle Mile. The forum will be held over Zoom and you can contact the Ward three office at seven nine one four seven one one to register. Also, on June 18th, Literacy Connects and the American Red Cross are partnering to host a blood drive in the Amphi neighborhood. You need an appointment and spaces are limited, so please contact Literacy Connects at eight eight two eight zero zero six to participate. All donors at this drive will receive a five dollar Amazon e-gift card. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Vice Mayor Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Our June Town Hall for Ward four is going to be happening on June 24th at five thirty P M. That's going to be with the Houghton South Neighborhood Association, which includes Savano, Sierra Marado, and Somoro Trails. Information can be found at tucsonaz.gov/wardfour. And the moment you've all been waiting for, the big annual Ward four back to school bash, which I can't believe we're talking about back to school because we just got out of it, but we have to plan. So mark your calendars for Saturday, July 24th. It's going to be from eight to ten. It is going to be a drive-through format this year to be COVID conscious because we are not out of the woods yet, especially for our little ones. More details are to come, but please save the date for that. Also want to wish our beloved Gabby Giffords a happy birthday today. Also to congratulate the Tucson Fire Academy graduates who will be graduating this Friday, wishing you all great success and safety in your upcoming career. And also want to acknowledge council member Cunningham's work. I was able to attend the game on Friday. Stand in for you, Mayor, and flip the coin, which was an amazing experience, but just knowing that our decision to help sponsor that event. And help create that amazing opportunity that so many of those athletes lost. It just really was heartwarming to see. So, so great work, Paul. And yeah, it was a great event. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Council member Fimbres.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Friday, May 28th, State Representative Andre de Alessandro, South Tucson Mayor Bob Tesco, South Tucson Mayor Vice Mayor Herman Lopez. Join me to present thank you cards and letters and posters made by schoolchildren from Ward five and across Tucson. To veterans and staff who are at the VA Hospital to thank them for their service to our country. This is a 12th Annual Memorial Day Presentation, I along with other elected officials have done. I want to thank the students and teachers of Drachman-Bontesori, Mission View, Esperanza, St. Joe's, Ochoa, Gallego, and Van Basker School, who took part and created the wonderful cards, posters, and letters. The 12th Avenue Business and Neighborhood Coalition held their first cleanup on Saturday, June 5th. I want to thank everyone who turned up to this event to help up clean up the whole 12th area. I want to thank Walgreens, the Pima County Attorney's Office, LPKNC, TPD South, with specific Will Corales and Gabe Bialis, who joined the Ward five council office to help with this event. I also want to thank everyone who came out Saturday, June 5th, to Santa Rita Park for the ice cream social and to give their feedback for the drafting of the master plan for Santa Rita Park. This is work in progress to draft this plan so that the historic park and for the surrounding neighborhoods. I want to thank Parks and Recreation staff went out to conduct the surveys and the surrounding neighborhoods who came out to give their opinion for the area in the South Park. Master, Santa Rita Master Plan. Also, Santa Rita Park on June 5th was the Pima County Council and Agents Take the Shot Event. Offering the COVID-19 vaccinations, more than 150 people turned out and got vaccinated. Want to congratulate PCOA, ACE, United Way, TP, and the Pima County Health Department for their efforts on Santa Rita Park. Also on Saturday, I attended the June 5th. I had the privilege of attending the 10th Annual Tucson Firefighters Ball held at Star Pass, the Tucson Firefighters and Their Labor Association, IFFA Local 479 held the event. Raise funds for their programs and efforts to help our community. And to congratulate Josh Campbell and his beautiful wife Tamara, for their leadership of organizing this. And the IFFA Local 479, the organization, on a great success we've had for what they do to help our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fimbres. Councilmember Kozakic.
I'm good, thanks.
Really, really quick, one last thing about the Firefighters Ball. They do an award every year for the most outstanding firefighter. Who does a big contribution to the community force and fire. I want to congratulate Captain Dan Halfafinger, who, who won it this year. That's well done, Captain, and everybody. I wanted to make sure he was mentioned.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham, and congratulations to the captain. I will take the time that Councilmember Kozakic decided not to use because I have a long list of things to talk about today. Today, along with my colleagues, Councilmember Fimbres and Councilmember Kozakic. The city manager, representatives from Tucson Water, their director of ADQ and community members and more. Came to an emergency press conference that we called to announce to the community that we have an impending closure of our TARP facility because of unfortunate very high levels of PFAS in our water. And so. This is a testament of the unity of all of us on Mayor and Council, as well as our city manager. Our Tucson Water Director and his team to make sure that we deliver safe drinking water to Tucson Water customers and city of Tucson residents. This has been something that mayor and council have been working on for many decades to build the trust of our community. And make sure that we do everything we possibly can to deliver safe drinking water to our residents and Tucson Water customers. The impending closure of TARP is scheduled for June 21st. And we did inform our congressional delegation, including Senator Sinema and Senator Kelly, Kelly, as well as Congressman Grijalva and Congresswoman Kirkpatrick, as well as Congressman O'Halloran. We are going to do everything we possibly can to make sure that the residents of the city of Tucson and the Tucson Water customers are not left holding the financial bag of what it costs to remediate PFAS. And so I just want to thank everyone that showed up, all of my colleagues now on the council for your diligence in making sure that we do this right and that we maintain and keep the trust of the residents of Tucson in terms of our water quality. We will also work with our congressional delegation to make sure that the Department of Defense and those that are responsible for the PFAS contamination of our water system pay for the remediation of PFAS in our, in our, in our aquifer. Onto the next item. This month, we commemorate both the joy and heartbreak of our ongoing fights for civil justice, civil rights, and equality throughout our nation's history. June is Pride Month, when the LGBTQ plus community comes together celebrating their resilience and freedom. Our first local pride event was held in Himmel Park on June 28th, 1977. One year after the beating and murder of Richard Heagan Jr. in a parking lot outside Tucson Stonewall Tavern on North First Avenue. That year, the city of Tucson became among the first U.S. cities to pass an anti-discrimination ordinance protecting gays, lesbians, and bisexuals. Anti-discrimination protections were extended to include gender, gender identity in 1999 in the city of Tucson. These policies reflect our intentions and values as an inclusive, welcoming community. And yet we stand in solidarity, knowing the fight for LGBTQ plus equality continues today. Religious bigotry has no place in our community. I was saddened to learn about the anti-Semitic vandalism at the Shabbat synagogue that occurred over the weekend, as well as the previous attack on Congregation Shabbabim. Hurting any one of our diverse, vibrant community with, with our many faiths and traditions hurts us all. I stand with Tucson's Jewish community to condemn this bigot act of intimidation, desecration, and violence. And finally, we celebrate Juneteenth, African-American Freedom Day in June. Here in Tucson on June 19th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. and nine to 10:00 p.m. Pima Community College, the Tucson Juneteenth Committee, will be presenting a virtual celebration of Black culture, history, dance, song, and fun. So join the celebrations with performances by dancing in the streets, Black Renaissance, Ada Red, Austin, and much more. We will be sharing all of the information to my social media platforms so the community can participate either virtually or in person where these events will be happening. And it's my pleasure to read a proclamation acknowledging Juneteenth as America's second independence day. Whereas the United States of America was founded on the principles of freedom and justice for all, and the Civil War was fought to ensure that freedom was shared by all. And whereas General Gorgon Granger read the Third General Order in Galveston, Texas, bringing freedom to the last of the enslaved in Texas on June 19th, 1865. Two and a half years after the effective date of Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas Juneteenth represents a very important milestone in American history, when our nation finally and truly became the land of the free. And whereas Juneteenth was recognized as America's second independence day by the United States Congress, Senate Joint Resolution 11 and House Joint Resolution 56 in 1997. And whereas many communities throughout the nation across Arizona come together to celebrate Juneteenth as a day of freedom and to enjoy its spirit of peace, respect, and understanding. Now, therefore, I, Regina Romero, Mayor of the city of Tucson, Arizona, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2021, to be America's second independence day. In this community and encourage all of our citizens to celebrate Juneteenth in the city of Tucson. And witness whereof I have here unto set And witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Tucson, Arizona, to be affixed this day of June, this, what is it, 8th day of June, 2021. Thank you so much, and congratulations to the Juneteenth Committee for all of their work in a difficult time to celebrate our history. With that, we move on to Item 4.
City Manager's Report Summary of Current Events.
City Manager's Communication Number 164, dated June 8th, is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, no report today. Thank you.
Item 5.
Liquor License Applications Report from City Manager.
City Manager's Communication Number 165, dated June 8th, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, this evening's liquor license agenda under Item 5B, we have five requests for new license, one request for sampling privileges. Staff has indicated that all the applicants are in compliance with city requirements. An appropriate motion would be to forward Items 5B 1 through 6 to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I move to forward the liquor license to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
Second. There's a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6.
Call to the audience.
At this time, the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue except for items scheduled for a public hearing at this meeting. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations, and call to the audience is scheduled to last for no more than 30 minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review the matter, ask the matter be placed on a future agenda, or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. Um, speakers are limited to three minutes, and we are scheduled for 30 minutes, so for speakers that are scheduled, please make sure that you, um, state your name, and if you're a resident of the City of Tucson or not, and if you're a paid speaker. So with that, we're going to start call to the audience. I have a Lauren McCullough. Lauren McCullough, Mr. Clerk, do we have Lauren on the phone?
I, I do not see Lauren, Your Honor.
Okay. Karen Green.
No, Your Honor.
Dale Warner.
Yes, Your Honor.
Mr. Warner.
Dale Warner.
Hello, anybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes, Mr. Warner. Go ahead.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you. My name is Dale Warner. We moved into our current home just west of 36th Street and LaToya Boulevard before Councilwoman Lane Santa Cruz was born. And my family moved to Tucson 10 years before Mayor Romero was born.
I'm trying.
As a qualified Tucson, yes.
You just have to, if you have a, a computer on, just make sure that you put it on silence. Care any of the feedback?
Um, there's, I'm standing outside, so.
Okay. Uh, then it must have been someone else. Go ahead, I'm sorry for.
No worries, I'll start over. Uh, my name is Dale Warner. Uh, we moved to, into Tucson, uh, we moved into our current home just west of 36th Street and LaToya Boulevard before Councilwoman Lane Santa Cruz was born. My family moved to Tucson 10 years before Mayor Romero was born. As a qualified Tucsonan, I need to give some feedback. I know that relationships go back to 2006 with PDSD, Mayor Romero, Councilwoman Lane Santa Cruz, carry slash landowners over this 36th Street in LaToya, 36, uh, 60-acre site. It is time for Mayor Romero and our Ward 1 Lane Santa Cruz to ask this owner to let the city make this a desert park. I also cannot believe that Mayor Romero would, with her Million Tree Program, with which some 300,000 trees will die in the first two years of planting them, would have allowed any po-dozing of 2,400-plus trees and over 1,000 Saguaro cactuses for some homes. A Tahuana home, uh, Saguaro's Revenge, depicts a Saguaro as a human-like entity that enacts revenge on people that has wronged it. But PDSD has no problem with this, it will be. With council members saying, no one likes development under the existing zoning, with PDSD's monopoly with a business producing a service of money, for money, with using FLD with RAC, and has an unchecked exclusive control over a commercial activity changing zoning laws for developers, it's the bonus of FLD, of higher density than would otherwise be allowed. With Mayor Romero stating that she believes in and wants higher densities, stating we need to push Tucsonans to higher densities, why? Intensities bring money to the city. As a Tucsonan, it hurts to see mayor and council give high fives to themselves after FLD projects are approved. Tucsonans do not want to become a Southern Phoenix of Arizona. But this is, is this what Mayor Romero wants, and as well as her developer friends? I say no. For 41 years, a 60-acre desert gem has been under a zoning attack just to make money. FLD and the use of RAC as a development tool will, will be removed before the density is acceptable. Vote no on C-98145C, 36th and LaToya. This permit is still active. Mayor and council, please help this owner sell this. Please help this owner sell this to the city for a desert park. Do, do not undo what nature has worked so hard to develop for us all to enjoy. Please, mayor and council, listen to my heart. This means too much to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Elise Love. Elise Love.
No, Your Honor.
Heidi Miller.
Yes, Your Honor.
Ms. Heidi Miller.
Hello, my name is Heidi.
Hi, Heidi. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I'm a small business owner, just read the newest utility manual draft for small cells. Interesting observing the city's evolution, finally beginning to understand that they were mistaken from the start. Known for attracting legal fictions imposed upon the public the past two years, here we are drafting 66 pages of regulations formerly claimed to be preempted by state law. State law didn't change just the number of people impacted by negligent process. It's a great start, it's good stuff, but the language is all wrong, it's very non-committal, much will prove to be immaterial due to language not compelling compliance. Merely general desires, uh, being selfless, intentional otherwise. For example, intention is to reduce the number of poles, so which ones are we taking away? Right, that's not the intent, we're adding 10,000 sites in front of homes, non-compliant with federal law despite Verizon's claims. Tucson's facilities are on record as violating federal standard a minimum of eight times over. Worst of the manual, it proceeds any law or vote of council, thus all void. Or is it worse that it fails to give staff direction in how to comply with federal law? That's a toss-up, it's hard to decide. There's too many more issues in the draft, so let's meet and discuss them. Steve K cites in his newsletters Title 11 of a bill that never passed into law. Hopefully since, it's been discovered that the city isn't governed by bills or by Title 11, but by laws. Title 9, the ARS, Chapter 5, Article 8. He cites a Y2K Second Circuit Court ruling, we're in the Ninth Circuit. Regardless, the ruling was overturned by the Supreme Court in 2005. Steve, TEP did not give favor to HB 2365, so you must not libel them. His premises have been all false. The past week, we see him frustrated, this takes all his time. Where's the rest of the council helping him out? So imagine our frustration, our neighborhoods invaded, all who swore an oath fall far short of obligations to protect privacy, property values, public safety, the quiet enjoyment of our streets, and to uphold the law, poll after poll after poll after poll. I see and appreciate that Steve cares, the only council member doing anything. Does the rest of the council fail to realize that there will be nowhere left to go? But who can bear to see any complaining when the solution, the Tucsonans ordinance presented by residents sits on all your desks right now? Misunderstood and ignored as telecoms laugh at how gullible. Tucson declares a climate emergency, meanwhile, increasing its power usage, thus pollution exponentially, to favor an under-regulated surveillance network. It's a non sequitur. So what do we do? We realize we can regulate aesthetic location and co-location super, so what's left? Those co-locations need to be tiny, besides the Wi-Fi routers, they can fit on anything, and there's no need or premise to install ugly new poles. But we're still neglecting public safety and compliance with federal law. So minimize power to negative 85 dBm, you have the authority, and to be clear, you can't convert off a measure of power to gigahertz, a measure of frequency, it can't be done. You even reserve the authority to disable small cells at night, it's an operation, you retain authority by federal law. The city must meet and discuss with the informed and dedicated residents, the utility manuals constructed ultra varies, though its contents are decent start, it's grossly insufficient. Agenda is the Tucsonans WTF ordinance, pass it and combine its contents with that utility manual, you'll set boundaries and turn cannons into squirt guns, so let's do it, let's get it done, and let's have a meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Carl Harshman.
No, Your Honor.
All righty. Catalina. I don't have a last name for that, but it's Catalina.
She didn't provide a number, Your Honor, so we're not sure if she's on, but it doesn't appear so.
Cindy Hogan.
Yes, Your Honor.
Cindy Hogan. Ms. Hogan. Yes.
Very good, thank you, my name is Cindy Hogan, here again to speak with you about digital inclusion. The digital divide is a solvable problem that requires investment in broadband infrastructure, affordability, and adoption. Infrastructure and affordability are the most commonly discussed topics, but they are only part of the solution. My focus during research over this last year has turned to the other barriers that go to adoption of new technologies. I believe that there are very human concerns that stand in the way of technology adoption, and for that reason, I believe that as a community, we need to begin to match human concerns with human solutions. Right here in Tucson, there are a great number of people.
Do this call, when they call my name, I speak?
I'm sorry?
I'm gonna.
Go, go ahead, Ms. Hogan, I think there's someone.
Oh, I'm sorry, I hear someone in the background, okay, that's not my house. So, um, right here in Tucson, there are a great number of people who are not adopting the technologies that many of us take for granted. Why not? Fear is a big factor. Fear of technology, one common phrase I hear about computers is, I'll break it. Fear of exposing personal identities online because no one has taught them how to guard their privacy. Lack of trust signing up for exten- expensive service contracts that they don't understand. Many people can't afford classes or have no one to teach them the things they need to know to feel comfortable using computers on the internet. Many don't know where to go to ask the questions that they have, and many don't have the questions, let alone the answers. Human beings, one-on-one, can begin to address these fears and concerns. While most of us are not going to dig fiber trenches or put poles up or lobby for infrastructure expansion, there are person-to-person things we can be doing right now as a community to bridge the digital divide. I've been watching organizations spring up across the country that are setting up tech hubs to provide a variety of services. These do not replace the wonderful individual efforts across their cities, but supplement them and, and share out about the resources that are already in place. Some have paid staff supported by community funding, some use volunteers to provide tech support and navigation, some train students to become digital navigators in return for a computer at the end of their course. Some organizations provide peer-to-peer support. These hubs become trusted resources in their go-to spot. I'm, I don't feel like it's okay for me to continue, there, there's a lot of noise.
So sorry, there's someone in the background that needs to put themselves on mute. Anyone?
Give it another whirl.
There you go. Anyone that is present and waiting to speak, please put yourselves on mute so that you can allow people their, uh, three minutes. Go ahead, we're gonna extend 30 seconds.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Um, some, some organizations are providing peer-to-peer support. These tech hubs become trusted resources and, and their go-to spots in, in cities, with recognition as reliable allies in this confusing world of computers and the mystifying internet. Tucson has many local digital literacy efforts being provided at libraries, community centers, and workforce development sites that we need to expand upon. We need to reach K through 12 youth, young adults entering the workforce, and seniors who may still need to work, stay socially connected, and care for medical conditions. Digital problems with human solutions. The $1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan, for the very first time, is, is providing funding for programs actually centered on digital literacy assistance. The local Fiscal Recovery Fund will be distributing funds to municipalities, counties, tribes, and states for what we call digital inclusion efforts, like the one I just described. Providing digital skill training and support to underserved households where they are so needed have been shown to improve behavioral and physical health outcomes, financial stability, greater participation in civil society, and confidence in the future. Tucson needs to acknowledge and understand the gaps we are facing and, and the impact they are having on the health of our community. Was that 30 seconds or, or, or time?
That was time, that was time.
Oh, okay. Uh, so one last sentence, this year promises to be a landmark year for digital inclusion advocacy, let's put Tucson in the forefront of this effort. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan, and I'm sorry about those interruptions.
That's all right, thank you.
Thank you for the information. We move on to Item 7.
Consent Agenda Items A through F.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, this evening's consent agenda, Item A is approval of minutes, Item B is an intergovernmental agreement with Pima County for affordable early childhood development programs. Item C is employee benefits, adoption of fiscal year 2022, Tucson Supplemental Retirement System employer and employee contribution rates. Item D is an intergovernmental agreement with the Pima County Regional Flood Control District for conveyance of lands for flood control management purposes. Item E is finance reallocation of funds from the Ward 6 office budget surplus for green stormwater infrastructure and transportation-related projects. Item F is finance approving the expenditure of funds for improvements at Jesse Owens Park. Let's extend the consent agenda, Your Honor, I believe that the city attorney has correction to read to Item D.
Mr. Anken.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I think, Mr., you have to put yourself on.
Okay. Good to go?
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, during the study session with respect to Item D, um, the IGA for the conveyance of property, the Flood Control District, we discussed a particular property, um, located, uh, near Irvington in the Santa Cruz River to the southwest of that location. Uh, it, it is listed in that agreement, uh, in Exhibit B as RP 1548, parcel number 153. And what we discussed is the need to make sure that prior to conveyance, uh, that the actual legal description, uh, of that property in terms of what's being conveyed excludes an area of the property that, uh, will be needed for, uh, uh, future city use. Um, and so, look. be needed for future city use. And so, looking at it, as it turns out, we don't need to amend the agreement or the exhibit itself.
I'll give it to you.
Because the exhibit already explains that that property is not yet defined or that there is not a legal. So, if you approve this item, it would be useful to also give direction.
Uh, make sure that you put yourselves on mute.
So, if you approve the item as presented but just with the additional direction that prior to any conveyance of the property I just described, RP 1548, or those immediately adjacent, including the adjacent road easement, that the description and the legal will exclude the property that is needed for future use by the city in the city's best interest.
Okay. And that in itself, including that language, will keep the land under the city of Tucson's control?
That's correct because all of those things would need to be determined before there's any conveyance.
Okay. Do you want to, Councilmember Santa Cruz, I think you brought this up as well as Councilmember Kasachik. Councilmember Santa Cruz, do you feel comfortable with that language?
Yes, Mayor, I'm good with it.
Okay. So, Mr. Rankin, you've already read this into the record and so, do you need any additional direction in a motion?
That direction will be included if the item is approved by motion, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Alrighty. So, do I have a motion placed?
I'm move the consent agenda for approval.
I'll say. There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Cunningham. Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Kasachik.
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Romero.
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres.
Aye.
Ms. Ulick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Item eight.
Public hearing amending Tucson Code Chapter 27 relating to the implementation of a differential rate structure for Tucson Water customers located in unincorporated Pima County. Hearing ordinance number 11841.
City manager's communication number 174 dated June 8th is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the proposed new differential rate structure for Tucson Water customers located in unincorporated Pima County. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations but we do have a very, very long list of speakers and if you do hear others say touch on some of your points and you want to allow for additional speakers, please shorten up your presentation. Mr. Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
We do, Your Honor.
Alrighty, I have a list. It's a very expanded list. Let's, I did see on this list Supervisor Rex Scott. I did want to allow Supervisor Scott to speak. Go ahead. Go ahead Supervisor.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor Romero and honorable members of the Tucson City Council, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight regarding my opposition to the proposal you are considering imposing higher water rates on Tucson Water customers in the unincorporated regions of its service area. These higher water rates, which are unfair, inequitable, and illogically conceived, would affect many of the people that I represent. I am going to focus on just three of the reasons for opposing this proposal in my remarks to you. First, many of you have asserted that Tucson Water has never been formally designated as a regional water provider. This assertion ignores the practices of the utility dating back to the late 1970s when Arizona jurisdictions were asked to outline their service areas to justify their requested allocations of Central Arizona Project Water. Tucson Water designated a service area that stretched from Catalina to the north and Corona de Tucson to the south. As a result, the city receives almost eighty percent of our region's industrial and residential CAP allocation. It has been providing water to people in that service area since that time and has never charged higher rates to the customers who live outside the city limits. These citizens, who make up more than a third of the utility's rate payers, have a reasonable expectation that they will be treated fairly and equitably regarding the rates they are charged. If they use more water, they pay more under the utility's tiered rate system, which is just and reasonable unlike this proposal. Second, there is no cost of service rationale for these higher rates. This fact has been acknowledged by city officials and has been noted in the minutes of the Citizens' Water Advisory Committee. Despite the assertions of some of this proposal's supporters in the community, it does not cost Tucson Water more to deliver water to its customers outside the city limits. In fact, there are many areas within the city limits that are as remote or elevated as those outside the city limits that are often cited by those who defend this proposal. Utilities are supposed to set rates that are just and reasonable and that do not generate revenue in excess of the costs of service they incur. I have been urged by some of my constituents to support higher sewer rates for city customers as either a retaliatory measure or to exert leverage on all of you. I will never support rates that exceed our utility's costs of service. Neither should you. This brings me to the third reason to oppose this proposal, which is that it has been poorly and illogically conceived. When this proposal was first put forth, many of you touted it to induce either annexation or incorporation. This explained by higher rates were not being proposed for Tucson Water customers in Marana, Oro Valley, or South Tucson, even though there are also rate payers outside the city limits. There have also been claims that the city's general fund incurs costs for water infrastructure needs outside the city limits, ignoring the fact that residents in unincorporated areas contribute a significant share of the sales tax revenue that supports general fund expenditures. Significantly, there has also been no clearly designated need for the revenue these excessive rates would generate. Your own Citizens' Water Advisory Committee said just six days ago that, quote, "In the past, increasing water rates has been proposed to address a specific need. In this case, it is not clear to CWA what need Mayor and Council wish to address. As city and county leaders, we need to be collaborative and productive, working together on positive measures to benefit the people we serve. We will certainly have opportunities to discuss such possibilities in the future. I ask you to reject this divisive and unjust proposal that will punish Tucson Water rate payers solely because they live in unincorporated Pima County. Thank you again for this time. I appreciate it."
Thank you Supervisor Rex. Really appreciate you coming in letting us know how you feel. Our next speaker is Christina McVie.
Yes, Your Honor.
Christina McVie. Just to remind speakers that if you're on mute, you have to press star six to unmute yourselves.
I show her unmuted, Your Honor.
Just to remind speakers again that you have to press star six to unmute yourselves in order to be able to speak and for us to be able to hear.
Chris, go ahead.
Again, I'd like to ask speakers that want to speak to unmute yourselves by pressing star six. You do have five-minute presentations. You do have to introduce yourself and if you live inside the city or outside of the city, or if you're a paid speaker as well. We're going to have to move on to the next person. If we can have Sandy Barr speak, please. Sandy Barr. Hi there. Hi there. We can hear you. Please start your presentation.
Thank you very much. I apologize for the difficulty. My name is Christina McVie and I am the president of the Board of the Community Water Coalition of Southern Arizona. And we have written to you three times in the last several months regarding this issue. I believe you have our last letter in front of you. So, to save time, I did want to share with you one of our board members' comments. Dr. Charles J. Cole is the professor emeritus and former curator of the Department of Herpetology and Ichthyology of the American Museum of Natural History in New York. He received his PhD in 1969 from the University of Arizona in Ecology and Evolutionary Biology under Dr. Charles Lau. So, his expertise is significant. And these are his comments and I quote, "Thank you for allowing my views to be expressed. My wife and I moved back to Tucson in 2009 to live in a new home adjacent to Saguaro National Park west in the Tucson Mountains, off the water grid. Being familiar with the water problems in Southern Arizona, we built a 26,000-gallon cistern beside our house in which we store the rainwater collected from our roof. It provides all the water we need year-round for water uses inside the house, for our 26,000-gallon swimming pool, and on good years for two small vegetable gardens. I cannot believe that people are discussing the issue of providing Tucson's water to additional developments outside the city limits of Tucson. Doesn't anybody at this meeting read Tony Davis? The best science in the world, including from the University of Arizona, tells us that with over-demand and climate change in the current mega drought, water availability in the Colorado River is dropping rapidly. A Tier One cutback in supplies likely will happen in 2022 and a Tier Two cutback in 2023. Lake Powell is now filled to only 34% capacity and Lake Mead to 37%, and both are dropping. See also Coon &amp; Fleck 2019, Science Be Damned: How Ignoring Inconvenient Science Drains the Colorado River, out of the U of A Press. Although there are some far-out wacky ideas of how engineering in the distant future might help by bringing in new water from out of state, none of these ideas looks realistically promising. If your bank account were dropping like this, would you rush out to spend more money recklessly? Or would you protect your family's future by saving and planning for the worst-case future scenario? If the worst-case scenario happens with the water availability in Tucson, all the children in town who are 10 years old or younger today may become climate change immigrants by the time they are 40 years old, moving out of state, looking for employment in an acceptable environment elsewhere. They will be competing with climate change immigrants from elsewhere as well, as the crisis that is already upon us is global in extent. Our main emphasis now should be to protect our current residents. We should do this not only by not wasting our water recklessly, throwing it about. Instead, by allowing ourselves instead of allowing ourselves to be pushed around by greedy developers who are ready to build and move on, we should focus our city planners and engineers on working with the new generation of science-aware developers who are ready to use low-impact development and green infrastructure designs to help us through the difficult decades that are coming fast. These are not wacky ideas. They are proven. It is also proven that the great civilizations of the past that are no longer with us collapse due to insufficient preparations for a changing world, and history is known to repeat itself." End quote. And to that, I would simply add that in our last letter to you, we have expressed our concerns about having these hard conversations. And one of them is in terms, well, many of the points that we make are in terms of, number one, raising more funds to relieve the debt, approximately 15 million as I understand it, that's been incurred so far. Also, to assist low-income residents throughout the service area, including Pima County, to insist on retrofitting low impact design and green infrastructure. And as of today, I would suggest to you, since all of these are also housed in Tucson Water, we might want to consider using some of our money as a cost of service to improve the contaminated water that we're dealing with right now so that we can continue to serve safe drinking water to the residents that are here. And with that, I thank you.
Thank you Ms. McVie. I'm gonna go back to Sandy Barr.
Good morning.
And I want to remind people to press star six to unmute yourselves, that you have five minutes. And let us know, please, if you live inside the city or not and if you're a paid speaker.
I did not see Sandy, Your Honor.
Since all of these are also housed in Tucson Water, we might want to consider using some of our.
Alrighty. Brittany Aragon.
Excuse me?
Brittany Aragon.
Anybody? Anybody?
No, I haven't seen them.
No, Your Honor.
Nope. Sophia Ochoa. Do you see Ms. Ochoa?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Steve Arnquist.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Steve Arnquist. I'm a Ward Three resident. I am not a paid speaker. There's a lot that's gonna be said and some that has been said already about this issue and I agree with a lot of the arguments for differential rates around conservation. But for me, it's a little simpler than that. The city of Tucson primarily serves the residents of Tucson and its departments work toward that goal. Tucson Water is a city department purchased with city taxpayer dollars to remain ultimately financially responsible for the utility. And it's normal, appropriate, and expected, I think, for city residents to receive discounts on city services as is seen in virtually every Arizona municipal water utility that serves outside of their borders and virtually every other non-transportation service that the city of Tucson offers. Currently, city of Tucson residents get discounts at the other two city enterprise funds. As a Tucson resident, I will pay less to pay a round of golf at any of the city's five golf courses. And even though I don't get a discount on trash service because the city doesn't offer service outside the city, I do get reduced rates at the landfill. City residents also get discounts in priority registration at KidCo, in Betweeners Club, reduced rates on exercise, craft classes, rec center visits, Ramada reservations, beer permits, full entrance fees. In fact, with the exception of Suntran and Park Tucson, I can't think of any services that there's not a differential rate for except for water. I also just want to add, if there are differential revenues associated with these rates, I think they should go to ban Tucson Water's low-income program and to protect those most vulnerable in our community and to help prepare our city for our 21st century climate reality. I hope you will take this into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Arnquist. Appreciate your voice in this. Mr. Cesar Aguirre. Do we have Cesar Aguirre, Mr.? Do we have Cesar Aguirre, Mr. Clerk?
No, Your Honor.
Then Sophia Ochoa.
Yes, Your Honor.
Sophia Ochoa, you have to press star six.
Pierce is not on, Your Honor, I apologize.
That's okay. Diana Davenport. Do we have a Diana Davenport? Mr. Clerk?
Your Honor, it actually looks like she left.
Okay. Michael Geiman.
Yes.
Go ahead, you have five minutes. State if you live in the city or outside, or if you are a paid speaker.
Mayor Romero.
Yes, go ahead, Michael.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Romero.
I'm not a paid speaker. Yeah.
My name is... Is someone else speaking?
Yeah, they shouldn't be speaking. This time is... I just called Michael Geiman. So everyone else, if you could put yourself on mute.
Thanks, Mayor. My name is Michael Geiman, and I'm Vice President of the Tucson Water Chamber, and I do live inside the city limits. Thank you for your time tonight. The Chamber is a member of the Tucson Regional Water Coalition, a group of business organizations focused on regionalism and effective water management in the Tucson...
Michael, I think you must have put yourself on mute again. You just need to press, I believe, star six.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. I don't know what happened. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. The Chamber is a member of the Tucson Regional Water Coalition, a group of business organizations focused on regionalism and effective water management in the Tucson region. The Chamber and the members of TRWC all oppose the proposed differential water rate policy in its current form, and ask the mayor and council to oppose this policy. I submitted our letter of opposition to your offices yesterday, so instead of taking it from me, I thought I would echo comments made by others who do not think this is the right action to take. Take it from former city council members Carol West and Fred Ronstadt, who stated that municipal water and wastewater rates and fees are governed by Arizona state statute, and these rates and fees are required to be fair and reasonable. It would be unjust, unfair, and unreasonable for the city to deliver water, water that has been promised based on prior agreements to Pima County residents, and then charge these same residents higher water rates than those paid by Tucson residents. I was going to have you take it from Pima County Supervisor Rick Scott, but he spoke earlier tonight, so I will shorten my presentation by not duplicating his remarks. Take it from your own Citizens Water Advisory Committee, who said that in the past, increasing water rates have been proposed to address a specific need. And as Supervisor Scott pointed out, in this case, it is not clear to C WAC what need mayor and council wish to address. In their letter, they also stated their concern about impact of differential rates on low-income families in unincorporated Pima County. Take it from Arizona Daily Star columnist Tim Stella, who said that the city has offered a variety of unconvincing reasons to raise water rates by up to 50% on the 29% of Tucson water customers who live in unincorporated Pima County. These are people who have no alternate water source they can turn to, and they have no vote on whether to increase their own rates. To conclude, this approach goes against the many strides our region has made to, well, act like a cohesive region. And the reasons some have pointed to as to why we need to enact this policy stem from encouraging annexation to recovering some phantom cost of service to ill-defined inequalities in the system, despite the fact the current rate structure is based on water usage, no matter where you live. Whatever the reason is today, this is bad policy, and at the very least, should be studied more. Please do not adopt differential water rates this evening. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Geiman. Ed Hendl.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name's Ed Hendl, and I'm not a paid speaker. I'm a member of the Citizens Water Advisory Committee and the Community Water Coalition of Southern Arizona, as well as the co-founder of the Our Water Tucson Coalition. And I'd like to speak in support of differential rates. First, I want to commend you for bringing Tucson closer than we've ever been to a fair water policy. Mayor Romero, this type of change is exactly what we envisioned when we elected you in 2019. And we're grateful for your skill in combining environmentalism with equity and economic justice. I also want to thank Councilmember Paul Cunningham for bringing this issue to the table and leading the charge. We really wouldn't be where we are today without your advocacy, and we're grateful for that. So right now, we're in the midst of a historic drought due to climate change. The Colorado River is drying up. If we want Tucson to be a thriving city for future generations, we need to protect our dwindling water supply. But despite that, right now, we're subsidizing sprawl and spreading our water supply thinner and thinner by not charging higher water rates outside the city, despite that they don't contribute to our state's shared revenue, and they have a higher average cost of service. For example, pumping water up into the Catalina foothills is extremely expensive. And by the way, that energy is not coming from clean sources. It's not from solar, it's coming from fossil fuels. And so that energy is contributing to climate change. But differential rates are not just an opportunity to protect the environment and conserve our water, but also to promote equity and justice. And that's why I ask that you implement a 40% differential rate and commit to using all of the revenue for the following things. One, cancel water bill debt for the 15,000 families across the service area who have been unable to pay their water bills during the pandemic and recession. Two, expand the low-income assistance program to lower future water bills for low-income families across the service area, including fully offsetting the new rates for low-income families in unincorporated Pima County, such that families in longstanding rural areas are not harmed. And we also need to make the program easier to enroll in, and we'll definitely be in touch with you guys on how we propose to do that. I won't get into that right now. Number three is investing in climate resiliency, which we all know is existentially important. So the people of Tucson have made it clear that we support this. The Our Water Tucson Coalition has been endorsed by 17 local organizations, small businesses, and city council candidates. And together, those groups represent thousands of Tousanans. So we urge you to implement differential rates and use the revenue to help working families and protect our environment and our water for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hendl. Hattie Hauser? Hattie Hauser? Just want to remind the speakers to press star six, to unmute yourselves.
Not on, Your Honor.
Not on?
No, no, Your Honor.
Juliet Saxton?
Hello? Hello, this is Juliet. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Saxton.
Okay. Hi, I'm Juliet Saxton. I live in Ward Three, and I support Our Water Tucson in a 40% differential rate. I love Tucson. It's my home, and I want to live here for the rest of my life. To make that possible, for Tucson to continue to be livable and have water, certain strategies and decisions have to be made to protect us. To fight against sprawl and environmental and water abuse, differential rates are one of the tough decisions we have to make to support our future. My support for differential rates is contingent on how this money is used. Others have suggested that there is no need to do this. Water is a need. Survival is a need. They have said that there is no suggestive use for the raised money from differential rates. I will tell you now what the suggestions are. It should be used to cancel water debt. It should be used to address green infrastructure, to plant trees and support rain harvesting. And it can be used to offset the cost for low-income families outside city limits. Water is the most basic resource for survival and for life, and we should be careful with it, and we shouldn't let our communities suffer from not being able to afford it. This is a vote for Tucson's future. Thank you for opening the floor to public discussion, and I hope that you vote for Tucson's future. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saxton. James Hanley?
No, Your Honor.
No?
No.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, who is this?
This is Rochelle Felzine. I think I heard the name correctly. Could you say that again?
That was James Hanley. Who is this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Is this Rochelle Felzine?
This is she.
Okay, just go ahead, Rochelle.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, so my name is Rochelle Felzine. I am a resident of Three Points, which is outside of Tucson. And I am not a paid speaker. So I'm calling in tonight just to say a few things in support of the differential rates proposal. You know, I think out of all the great points that have been made earlier tonight, the thing that I want to highlight the most is just the dire emergency that is our current water situation. And, you know, there was a CBS article that went out this morning, and it was highly disturbing. And it was just, it showed that we are in an extreme drought. This is an existential threat to life here. We can't continue living here unless we change very significantly the way that we use water and the things that we prioritize. Currently, we're on track to become phoenix. I live just outside of the southwest Tucson area that's kind of growing up Valencia toward Ryan Airfield. And, you know, this kind of sprawl development, the lack of differential rates is really what's stoking this and enabling it to proceed at such an incredible rate. And it's just not sustainable. And I think people... Previous speakers who have spoken against differential rates have mainly focused on the unfairness, or the arbitrariness, or just, you know, various complaints about the potential for rate hikes, rate hikes, which I want to call out, would be, you know, benefited greatly by a low-income assistance program. Or, you know, like, there are things that could be worked out to make it so that it would not be an undue burden. But as it stands, we are headed for disaster. And so I would like to express my support for the Our Water Tucson platform. I urge you to vote for a 40% differential rate that's projected to raise $27 million. And for the reasons that Ed Hendl lined out earlier, I'd like to see that be used to cancel all water bill debt for families in Tucson who racked up water bills during COVID. I would like to see lower water bills for low-income families within Tucson. And I would also like to see it used for climate resiliency programs, because that is going to be so critically important for our ability to continue living here. And, you know, just kind of as a final closing note, I think that a lot of people who are acutely worried about the financial situation around it, like the rate hikes, you know, they're going to be finding that those kinds of concerns pale in comparison to what's coming in five, 10 years for us here. So that is it for my remarks, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Rochelle. Marion Rocha? Marion Rocha? Want to remind people to press star six, to unmute yourselves.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, this is Ms. Rocha?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Marion Rocha, and I live in Ward Five. I work as a middle school teacher, and that's why I'm supporting the Our Water Tucson platform. I want the city council to please vote for differential water rate and use that money to cancel all the water bill debt due to the pandemic. I want you to lower the water bill for low-income families in Tucson and make sure you offset the new rates for low-income families in unincorporated Pima County. And lastly, I would love if you use this money to invest in climate resilience programs for a better future for my students. It's very important to me that the money is used as the Our Water Tucson platform specifies. So please vote for differential water rate and make good use of this revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rocha. Rachel Wilson?
No, Your Honor.
Peter Papas?
Yes, Your Honor.
Peter Papas?
Hello, my name is Peter Papas, and I live outside of city limits on the east side, and I am not being paid to do this. Mayor and council, thank you for hearing me. The consideration of differential water rates appears to be a case of a decision being made, and then facts hastily gathered to support it. I understand, you saw a revenue source and went for it. If the facts as presented on the Tucson Water website were all true, they would not conclusively support differential rates. But those facts are not true, as I proved in my letter hand-delivered to the city clerk a week ago today. Those alleged facts are, at best, half-truths and biased conjecture. I will not read my letter into the record now, trusting you have read it, as is your duty. I appreciate the privilege of turning on a tap and getting running water. Most people in this world do not have that blessing, and I'm willing to pay for it fairly. Fairly. If you need to raise rates to encourage conservation, raise them for everybody. Fairly. Humans have a strong sense of injustice. When somebody cuts in front of you at the bank or missions testing, when somebody zooms into a parking spot you are signaling for as the car occupies it leaves, you feel strongly wronged. You have been bullied by somebody who simply had the power to do so, no regard for you. Our abhorrence, our dread of being bullied comes from our basic survival instinct, fight or flight. We outside of city limits are being bullied by this proposal, We outside of city limits are being bullied by this proposal and many of us have made you aware of that. You may have the power for now, but we have remedies. Differential water rates have been upheld by Arizona courts but are subject to appeal in federal courts under Article Three, Section Two, Clause One of the U.S. Constitution, which covers disputes between citizens of the same states. We have the numbers to do it because this proposal will affect more than ten times the number of people currently paying higher differential rates in all of Arizona. That remedy would be sought under the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment, which enabled the Sherman and Clayton Antitrust Acts, which prohibit economic bullying by monopolies and trusts. Pretty much what is happening here. The due process clause prohibits state and local governments from depriving persons of life, liberty, or property without a fair procedure. Collected officials imposing on attacks who are not their electorate is not fair. As far as the claim that differential water rates incentivize annexation, people never join forces with bullies. At one point or more in your life, a business you dealt with raised its prices or otherwise lowered the value of what you got for your dollar. You did not join their custom rewards club. You sought alternatives. The alternatives you will drive us to are other sources of water, moving to where those are available, incorporating us as a separate municipal entity to gain a communal advantage to fight this bullying. Instead of an incentive for annexation, this proposal does the opposite. It sets neighbors in opposition. We shall all get along and love greater Tucson. It is often lamented how America now is so divisive. Please do not contribute to that in our Tucson. Thank you. And I apologize for my speech. I had a very unfortunate dental appointment today.
We understood you perfectly, Mr. Papas. Sean Wanzo? Sean Wanzo?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Um, yeah, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, my name is Sean Wanzo. Um, I'm probably, I'm going to assume I'm the newest person to Tucson, um, that's on this, you know, this call and, uh, Zoom event. I just moved here eight months ago. And, uh, I do diversity, equity, and inclusion work and I've gotten, um, connected to the social justice circles, um, you know, pretty quickly and they thought enough of me to, um, update me on the, you know, the issues, including this one, the water, um, differential issue. And so much, um, has been said, you know, um, you know, for the water differential, um, rate and, um, in opposition of it. So, um, to follow, oh, and I'm not a paid speaker. Let me make that clear. Um, but, so to try to add value as quickly as I can, um, within the time constraints, I'm just going to take, you know, um, there's been a lot of information, a lot of data, um, introduced. So I'm just going to go, I'm just going to stick with the social justice route. And, you know, I understand, you know, I, I educate, you know, um, you know, I educate about, you know, um, equitable and inclusive measures and initiatives and cultures. So I totally understand, um, people that are in opposition of the water differential rates, wanting, um, wanting equity and wanting a fair shape. And, you know, in, in, in all fairness to the gentleman that spoke before me, you know, wanting rates, um, raised across the board, you know, I, this is what I'll say to that. You know, when do we start to, you know, when it comes to eradicating systemic issues, how can you expect to raise the rates on people that can't afford it? You know, and I, I understand, you know, like I said, going, going back, um, to the equity issue. Um, this is something, whether it's the water differential rates or whether a lot of other legislative, legislative issues in the city of Tucson, state of Arizona, and across this country. This is where we, this is where the gap is. This is where divide is. Um, that, you know, a lot of people just don't believe in, you know, contributing a little bit more, you know, um, for those who are in a lesser, um, or lower socioeconomic bracket. And besides the climate justice, you know, and conservation issue, that's what this comes down to. Um, and just as a society, we're just going to have to make a choice. You know, and this is one of those big choices. And I've really been, I'd want to thank everyone that spoke because I've been educated even more outside of the little research that I've done. You know, um, when the, when the one speaker, when she spoke about, you know, this city looking totally different in five to 10 years, I think that that, you know, that needs to be, you know, um, looked at even stronger. But yeah, that's, that's what I want to, um, that's what I wanted to introduce and just kind of get every, you know, um, um, I would like everyone to think about is if people already are struggling, if, if we're all acknowledging that there is the issue and it sounds like everybody is, you know, um, and I, you know, I'd really like to thank the gentleman who spoke before me because he kind of summed up everybody's points. So if we're all acknowledging that this is an issue, you know, water conservation, um, you know, is an issue. Climate justice is an issue. Um, but how can we expect those that who are already struggling to pay the bill that they have to pay, to, to contribute even more? But, and we, but we're all acknowledging that there needs to be more of a contribution. So that's why I support the water differential rate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, this, uh, city clerk did tell me that Ms. Sandy Barr is online.
Hi, um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. You have five minutes.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. Um, I had some technical difficulties, including watching the wrong meeting. But, uh, anyway, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Sandy Barr. I'm the chapter director for Sierra Club's Grand Canyon chapter, which is the Arizona chapter. And, uh, we have, uh, thousands of members throughout the state, including in Tucson. And Sierra Club is supportive of the proposal to have higher water rates for those who reside in the urban sprawl areas outside the city boundaries. Uh, we've long advocated for limiting sprawl for a variety of reasons. Continuing to charge residents in the unincorporated areas of Pima County the same as those in the city means city residents are inappropriately subsidizing water to those areas, which can further burden those least able to afford those increases. It is more costly to serve those that are more distant from, distant from existing infrastructure. And I wanted to say too, that there have been numerous cost of service studies um, here in Arizona, in Tucson, in Phoenix, throughout the country. And consistently they show that urban sprawl areas are costly, uh, to serve. There's greater spending on infrastructure, public service delivery and more. And of course, it contributes to the systemic inequities. We applaud the city's efforts to look at equity and sustainability in all of its practices and, uh, moving forward with plans to make Tucson a model city for sustainability. To do that, uh, you need to look carefully at your water policies, including this one and consider, uh, moving forward with these differential rates. The dollars that are, um, the, the dollars that come in from those higher rates can be utilized for a variety of things. But obviously during these times, it's really important to help those who can least afford, uh, the water services. And that certainly would be appropriate, as would addressing climate resiliency, uh, because that is closely related to water services as well. And, uh, just again, want to thank you all for moving forward with this. I hope you will approve it. This, uh, isn't an easy thing to do, I know, but it is an important thing to do and will put Tucson on the right path. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Belinda Oden?
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead, Ms. Oden.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Romero and honorable members of the council. My name is Belinda Oden and I am a Tucson native and I currently reside in unincorporated Pima County, but spent the majority of my adult life living in Ward Three. I had the honor and privilege of working with most of you when I served as the Tucson Water Business Services Administrator responsible for financial planning, budgeting, and rate development from two thousand eight to two thousand fifteen during my twenty-eight-year career at the City Finance Department and at Tucson Water. I never imagined I would come before you to oppose a rate proposal from the Mayor and Council or Tucson Water. It is with a heavy heart that I am here before you to express my concerns regarding differential water rate proposals. I am opposed for several reasons. I don't believe it is consistent with City Code, Section twenty-seven dash thirty-two, which says that water service to the extent possible rates should be consistent with the policy for charging for water in direct proportion to the cost of securing, developing, and delivering water to the customers of the city water system. I don't believe it is consistent with Arizona Revised Statute nine dash five eleven oh one, which states that a municipality, um, engaging in water service should not increase its rates or, uh, or charge, change rate components fees or service charges without preparing a written report and supplying data that supports the increased rate along with a cash flow statement that shows the proposed revenues and the expenses associated, expenses or requirements associated with those requirements. Preparing a written report, excuse me, sorry. And thirdly, it is not supported by a cost of service analysis. And just, um, to piggyback on what another person, um, said, they said that it costs more. It actually, it may cost more to deliver to the foothills in some areas of unincorporated Pima County, but it also costs more to deliver to areas like Savano and all the new growth in the southeast part of Tucson. I just don't believe this is the proper tool to address the important community sustainability issues like pandemic debt and poverty among large numbers of Tucson Water customers regardless of jurisdiction. If the mayor and council thinks this is a good idea now, then it will still be a good idea in eight to twelve months after a thorough cost of service analysis has been conducted, including your rate consultants or new ones, whoever you use, and deep policy discussions and listening tours with all segments of your customers take place to address critical policy issues like pandemic debt, needs of low-income customers, and not just utility bill assistance, but housing, healthcare, education, and daycare assistance, as well as a long and deep discussion on the water sustainability in our desert community. I thank you for your service to our community and all Tucson Water customers regardless of jurisdiction. And I am grateful for the thoughtful consideration I hope you will give my, um, opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Angel Brialt?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Martha Rin?
No, Your Honor.
No, I-
Maybe so, Your Honor.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Um, it's actually Martha Aguilar. Not sure why it came up as Martha Rin. Um, but that is my maiden name. And thank you guys for, um, hearing me. Um, and yes, my name is Martha Aguilar. I'm a member of LD Nine. I'm a native Tucsonan. I was born here. I've lived here, um, for almost forty years. And, um, I'm very concerned about what's happening here. Um, as an enterprise utility company, uh, Tucson Water Company is governed by the City Council and operates with the support of the citizens and on behalf of the citizens. The citizens have clearly rejected this monstrous burden of a price gouge. Um, uh, the water rates have increased over the last ten years, uh, like I've never seen before. But hearing this, this plan that seeks to take advantage of a group of people in order to make a profit by charging high prices for a commodity that we, we need as the citizens here in Tucson, uh, this is the very definition of profiteering, actually. And the Metropolitan Pima Alliance, um, comprised over a hundred and fifty companies here in Tucson have rejected this plan. Um, eighty-one percent of Tucsonans that have been surveyed have rejected this plan. The city board is against this plan. The county board is against this plan. The county supervisor is against this plan. Developers in Tucson are against this plan. And the Citizens Water Advisory Council are against this plan. Um, there are no plans for the profits that you guys are seeking. Profits that are made from the hard-working middle class of this city. No plans that are shared. However, actually, as I'm listening to this, um, meeting, it seems with all the idealistic, social justice, woke individuals that are being weaponized against the hard-working class, as is usual, um, I'm starting to see an agenda for our money. But nowhere in Arizona do they charge for local water outside their jurisdiction. So you want excess funds and profits with no explanation as to where the funds will go. So you, and you seek our hard-earned money and according to the, the water survey suggests that you're, you might use it to pay for, um, water in the lower income bracket. And that's wealth redistribution, which is exactly what I'm hearing from some of these people that are calling in with clear social justice talking points, by the way. Existential crisis, they say. Um, cancel the water debt, they say. All of these things. Well, that's great. Cancel the water debt, but on whose backs? Right? I mean, who, who is being punished because they work hard? The people in this, this city with the hard-working jobs that keep this city economically afloat. That's who's going to be punished. So equity and justice for some has now become tyranny and punishment for others, for the working class. Equity is a race to the bottom. It is not equality. And singling out one group because they're hard-working and punishing them is the opposite of equality. It's actually the very definition of oppression or collective punishment. So I reject all of, all of these, these, um, people that are just coming in and they're, they're speaking these talking points. You have actual experts, people from many water advisory boards, many professionals speaking what is the truth and the reality, not just what, what feels good. I mean, yes, we all want to do helpful things for others and many of us do. And we want to take care of the environment and many of us do. But you cannot use this as an excuse to punish and increase these prices on this monstrous level. You absolutely have no right to do that. And I think it's a great, um, a great option that perhaps what we really need to seek is a regional water service through the state with a board that answers to the citizens. As Tucson Water Company has clearly become a profiteering monopoly that deserves to see a class action lawsuit by the many groups of people that they are going to harm that have actively stood up and said no to this. So thank you for listening to me and, um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your time and your input, Ms. Aguilar. Um, Brian Flag?
Yes, Your Honor.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Hello?
Go ahead. Five minutes.
Okay. Hi, Rahina. Hi, uh, City Council. Um, I'd like to thank you for bringing this forward. I truly think this is about equity. And so you, you're backing up your words, you know, with your actions here. Vote yes on, on this. I do not live in the city of Tucson. I'm a proud resident of the city of South. And there's a whole lot of poverty here. And if, and if you vote yes for the water differentials, it's going to be a great thing for a whole lot of people that are really struggling in this pandemic time to pay their water bills. So, um, that's what's good about it, um, to me. The other thing is, the reason I, I care about this and a bunch of other stuff is because I'm a Catholic. And, eh, like, you know, within our church teachings, there's the thing called the social justice, the social teachings of the Catholic Church. And a main theme of that is, um, looking out for the common good. It's kind of another, it's like kind of a religious way of talking about equity. And so, um, you know, if you're, if you're well-off and, and live in a well-off part of town, I don't know, man, they, you know, and, and you go to church or you're Catholic, you know, this is a moral issue. And so I think that the people- And so I think that the people that are against that should check that out and have a heart for the people that are on the bottom that are struggling to keep their family with water in the house. So, good job. Hang in there and remember, a whole bunch of them people that are against you on this, they can't even vote for you. They live in the, they live in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flag. Nick Breckenfeld. Nick Breckenfeld.
No, Your Honor.
Jennifer Earl.
Yeah.
No, Your Honor.
Timoteo Patilla.
No, Your Honor.
John Bellina. It's either Bellina or Bellina.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm thinking this whole price increase is not all that big of a deal. Five to ten dollars a month is not that big of a deal. What I'm concerned about is the pre-annexation development agreement. I would like for you guys to go ahead and approve that and have a new form for me to fill out so I can hook up to your water lines. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
All righty, that was faster than I thought. Thank you, Mr. Bellina. Corinne Cooper. Corinne Cooper.
No, Your Honor.
Paul Bucky.
Paul Bunny.
Oh, go go ahead.
Was that Paul Bunny? Paul Bucky.
Paul Bucky.
Yeah. Uh, hello. Yes, I live in the Tanca Verde Valley. My name's Paul Bucky. First of all, I wanted to thank, uh, Member Cunningham and Kozaczek for leading with me. I sent letters to everybody and and they offered to spend ten minutes with me. So I learned a lot. I do have to say how personally I am when I hear that I'm part of the affluent who can afford to pay for this. Uh, I've worked hard all my life. I'm seventy years old, lived in this valley for over twenty five years. And, you know, there's affluency in the city of Tucson, and there's poor people in the valley. So, you know, then I was really hurt also by this idea of social equality. I mean, I've been working for social equality for over fifty years here, some older than some of you there. And I actually volunteer forty to sixty hours in the Tucson city for a particular nonprofit that I run there. So what I'm really feeling is is this whole thing is it's it's dividing people. I mean, you're very progressive people on here, and you talk about unity, but here's something that's that's dividing neighbors. I have a neighbor across the street because I'm right on the border who wouldn't be affected by this, and I got on a phone call with them. Um, so there's an opportunity, it seems here, to bring people together in this remarkable valley that we have. And I'm not hearing that being addressed. You know, this is a period of time where division, we just, we don't need that. We need unity. Um, when I hear about annexation, I grew up in LA. I've seen small towns turn into, you know, urban sprawl. People are talking about urban sprawl. It's already happening out here. Three areas were annexed by the city, and you put in condos and townhouses. You re you subdivided it, and and it was all open space. So the urban sprawl is not the fault of the so-called affluent people. You know, it's it's how do we take affluency and share affluency with one another? And how do we take affluent? Affluency is affluency when you give it away. And and personally, I would have to agree with all these ideas, you know, whether it's, you know, the global warming or water issues or or helping low income pay. But to me, it would be important for everybody to come together to do that. And so I'm not really sure, you know, somebody said, well, it's only five or eight bucks, and I told Paul about that. It's like, well, you're talking hundreds of dollars for me. You know, because we have a big green space, and and at this period of time, you're having the water trees, which you're doing in the city. You just planted over sixty trees on Tanca Verde. You water them every day. So we're trying to keep the place green also, so it doesn't become an urban heat place. And so that would cost us a lot. So that idea of five to eight dollars, well, if anything, and that's a great thing, put that onto everybody, which of course Paul said, well, you can't do that. It's a state law. Well, if you're going to do a differential, then put put the level one and level two at at a high rate and then keep the other ones at a dollar difference, something that doesn't push those who who are who have been here for decades and for the elders, the sixty five and over, the seventy five who have budgeted their life to be able to live in this beautiful valley and who want to work with the city. And if we want to annex, where's the, let's have a plan. Let's get everybody together and develop an annexation plan or an incorporation plan and get the county people and the city people together. Get the supervisors together with the city council, and let's develop a a beautiful plan here that incorporates everybody and keeps the green spaces and allows the urban sprawl or growth and keeps the water where it needs to be. And I just, I hope that that if anything, if anything, grandfather in at least some of the old timers in these areas, you know, people who they're part of that, they're not really the low income, but they're not the affluent. They're, you know, they've they're living their life the best they can, and that's why they chose this area. And you have an opportunity to bring all these people together instead of what I've been feeling mostly is just this real separation. And that just hurt. It just really hurts.
Thirty seconds.
So I appreciate the time and energy that you've given me to speak. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bucky. Sitlali Ramirez.
Yes, Your Honor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Ramirez. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sitlali Ramirez. I live in Ward Two. Um, this is my first time calling a city council meeting. Um, I'm a student at the U of A. I'm studying environmental engineering, and one thing I'm particularly interested in is the issue of water and soil equity and conservation. Um, and so one thing I wanted to say is, um, our understanding of climate change and drought has, you know, significantly expanded and changed since the nineteen seventies, and I think that our water policy should reflect that. Um, you know, I'm particularly interested in how we can, um, as a society, balance and center, um, environmental justice in a way that, um, is, um, socially socially just and righteous and righteous for our communities. And so we can do that through, um, through water differentials and more specifically the our Water Tucson platform. And so one thing that, um, previous speakers opposing water differentials have claimed is that, you know, raising these water prices is unfair for them. And what I find unfair is that my water bill subsidizes urban sprawl that actively, you know, destroys our landscape and benefits which developers, um, like enthusiastically works against the very nature of a healthy city and community. Um, so, yeah, I just wanted to really urge urge you guys to vote, um, in support of water differentials. And, um, I think it's important to, um, you know, keep in mind, uh, the the vast differences between your constituents. I know we've been hearing a lot of, um, a lot of opinions from from community members that have lived here for a while. I've lived here all my life. Um, and I think that younger younger constituents, um, often feel intimidated by this process. Um, so I ask that you listen and that you vote in support of water differential. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Jessica Sampson.
Yes, Your Honor.
My name is Jessica Sampson. I live inside the city. I'm not a paid speaker, and I am a retired freight train engineer. Just before the pandemic, I read The Color of Law by Richard Rothstein. You may know that it is about how metropolitan areas became racially segregated due to federal, state and local government policies. That is how I became interested in equity in housing and related issues. I support raising the water rates for households in unincorporated areas by forty percent, but with protection for low income families in those areas. Raising the water rate for unincorporated areas by forty percent, at least forty percent, and using those funds to, as people have already said, to cancel pandemic water bill debts, to lower water bills for low income families and to invest in climate resiliency, that would show a sincere attempt at equity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sampson. Kevin Dahl.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Mr. Dahl.
Can you hear me okay? This is Kevin.
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. I reside in Ward Three, and I'm not a paid speaker. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members, for having these tough but necessary conversations on water policy. And a special thank you to Councilmember Cunningham for championing this issue. I know it has not been easy. In this time of climate change and unprecedented drought, we must treat our limited water supply like the valuable asset it truly is. I support mayor and council establishing differential rates for water delivery to customers in unincorporated areas. I strongly believe Tucson should stop serving water to new developments in unincorporated areas and stop serving subsidized water to those developments already built. It has been made clear over the last few months that the water infrastructure and energy costs are higher in unincorporated Pima County, and so is water use. In addition, Pima County loses out on hundreds of millions of dollars in state shared revenues due to the high number of people living in unincorporated areas. So let's join other cities like Phoenix, Mesa and Yuma, who charge differential rates for water customers living outside their city boundary. The revenue to the city should stay within Tucson Water. Some of it should be used for supporting people who have been economically impacted by COVID by providing assistance and paying down their utility debt. People outside of the city of Tucson should be, um, have access to that program as well. It should also be used for climate resiliency measures and for water sustainability. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Um, we have time, we've come to the hour, and, um, I do want to allow for some discussion from my colleagues on the council. Um, what we could do is maintain the public hearing open, um, so that we can continue hearing the voices of the community, um, and start discussion, um, on this item and keep the public hearing open, um, until, uh, the next mayor and council meeting. So is there any particular preference from my colleagues? We do have a pretty big amount of speakers still. Does that require a motion, Madam Mayor, to keep the public hearing open, or does it remain open without a a motion to close? Mr. Rankin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Ulrich. Um, you could do it either way, quite frankly. As long as you don't close the public hearing, it's still open. Um, but if the council chooses to keep it open and have the public hearing continue at the next meeting, then we'll formally announce that and say, you know, the public hearing will continue to be open and additional folks will be heard at the meeting of June twenty second, uh, meeting located at this locate, you know, at the beginning at five thirty PM.
Yeah, we have more than twenty, so what we could do, we can start discussion and, um, and then hear from my colleagues. If not, we can always continue the public hearing tonight if we want to, uh, continue hearing tonight. Councilmember Kozaczek.
I would suggest that in as much as we have, I mean, a joint meeting with the board of supervisors Friday, uh, we should just continue the public hearing until the twenty second, uh, keep the conversation fluid and hear people out. And whether that, Mike just said that doesn't necessarily need a motion, but that would be my preference.
I would recommend being it as a motion if we're doing it to a specific date, um, and that allow that helps us with any notice issues and, um, to take care of it that way.
Could you say yes to do a motion if you're doing it for a specific date? You know, then I'd move that we can keep the public hearing open till the twenty second of June.
I'll second that.
So there is a a motion to continue the public hearing, um, until the twenty second. We have additional discussion tonight and then keep the public hearing open for those that were not able to, uh, um, speak tonight. So with that, what I'd like to do, um, is allow Mr. Tamir, Tim Tamir, to, um, give a little bit of background, um, to, um, differential water rates and the discussion that we put forward, um, and then and then start discussion with my, our colleagues. So, Mr. Tamir.
Honorable Mayor and members of the council, thanks for the opportunity this evening to to give an overview of the the actual decision that's in front of council. Uh, this process actually started in January with mayor and council direction to explore options for differential rates for Tucson water customers in the unincorporated area. That, uh, motion came with a ninety day stakeholder engagement period that was directed to just begin to get input from the from the community, which we conducted and reported back to council at their April sixth meeting. And at that meeting is when, uh, mayor and council adopted a notice of intention to uh, to raise rates, uh, in the form of a differential rate, uh, up to fit, but not to exceed fifty percent. And that reflects the range of differential rates charged by other Arizona cities. Um, so differential rates are illegal and a legitimate action to take. The really, the question is, is it is it the policy decision of mayor and council to to go down that path? There there were eight options that were publicly noticed that, uh, have been discussed with the community, ranging from five that are flat differential rate, um, percentages from ten, twenty, thirty, forty or fifty percent. There were three additional options, uh, that were intended to reinforce the tiered rate structure and the conservation incentives provided by the rates paid by Tucson water customers, uh, with a base rate of either five, ten or fifteen percent. But as water usage rate increased and higher tiers of water usage are used by the customer, then the percentage of differential would would increase. And so that information's also been provided publicly. Uh, we've had two town halls in addition to a large number of interactions with different uh, community groups, uh, throughout this process. Uh, so the options for council, you've already taken a decision to continue the public hearing and keep it open till the the meeting of the twenty second. Um, so ultimately, um, whatever direction you give to staff tonight would be to better inform, uh, what we would, uh, have as the discussion on the twenty second, if you want to give us any further guidance, that would be what we would ask of you tonight. Um, and then just for for framing the discussion, you heard a number of reasons both for and against differential rates from from the, uh, the public hearing tonight. I'll just summarize a few of them. One is that all of Tucson water customers already qualify for our customer assistance programs. So we already, we have a low income assistance program. Customers in the unincorporated areas already qualify for that if they meet the income guidelines. Um, what what you heard from from some speakers tonight was perhaps expansion of that program. Uh, but it's important to note that the customer assistance is already available to all of our customers. Policy considerations include the fact that the city has a right to return on investment for extending its service outside its jurisdiction, and it's often a normal part of a cost of service analysis. The city bears the revenue risk. The city bears the revenue risk for developments outside its jurisdiction, and that is normally considered in rate making. And the city's general fund bears the financial risk of the water utility's financial health, and that is another policy consideration. And while this conversation has not been based on a cost of service study that has not been conducted, there are some differentials between unincorporated and incorporated customers that we've provided information to Council and the public on. One is that the, the way our water resources are managed are different in the unincorporated areas. This is especially true in the form of the effluent or reclaimed water. When we're serving inside of the city's jurisdiction, we get most of that water back in the form of reclaimed water, and we use it to settle our Southern Arizona Water Rights Settlement Act with the Ton of Autumn Nation. We use it to serve reclaimed water to offset potable water use throughout the region. When, when we're serving outside the jurisdiction, we lose a significant portion to septic tanks. Once we, once that water goes into a septic tank, we no longer have a legal right to it, so it's a lost water resource. And there's also a differential between service in the unincorporated areas where some of that water, the reclaimed water is retained by the county that operates the wastewater system. We have not done a cost of service analysis, but we have done an infrastructure analysis that indicates that while twenty-nine percent of our customers are in the unincorporated areas, they utilize thirty-six percent of our pipeline assets. There's also a differential in the water usage between the incorporated and unincorporated areas, where the unincorporated area customer, on average, the residential customer uses ten CCFs per month, which is a hundred cubic feet. That's our billing, standard billing amount. Whereas in the city, it's less, it's seven CCFs per month. And some speakers touched on, and I know that members of the Council have been very concerned about the state shared revenue and the fact that because Pima County has such a large unincorporated population, that is a detriment to the state shared revenues or tax monies that return to the region. You did hear that our Citizens Water Advisory Committee was against the differential rates proposals, and some of the reasons why. What I will emphasize is they were split. There were about two-thirds of the CWAC Citizens Water Advisory Committee that were against differential rates, largely because of the, the lack of a cost of service justification. And then there was one-third that were strongly in support of differential rates, and you heard from them tonight. You have heard from Pima County that's opposed to it, and some of the memos from the reason, but you also heard, for their, for their reasons. You've also heard from members of a coalition of stakeholders that are supporting differential rates on environmental and social justice issues. So you've actually heard a wide spectrum of input. Summarize that with, you still have the policy decision in front of you. And I will reiterate one point. For those that are really indicating a reliance on a cost of service or the lack of a cost of service analysis as being a detriment, the Tucson Water rate structure as it stands today has a number of elements to it that are driven by policy and not by cost of service. We subsidize the, the rate that we charge for reclaimed water customers from potable system revenues, as supported by CWAC. We provide low-income assistance programs out of rates and fees, as supported by CWAC. We support the super block rate structure, which, which charges more for water the more you use. That's not based on cost of service. That's to achieve the policy outcome of water conservation. We limit annual rate increases when we do them across the different rate increases, rate classes, so that we don't have rate shock. So again, we depart from cost of service. And we charge schools based on the industrial water rate, even though they have a very high peaking factor in the summer because of a policy consideration. So it's well within Mayor and Council's purview to weigh the benefits and the detriments of differential rates. It is charged by most of our peer cities, and it is something that is fully for your consideration and is implementable by this Mayor and Council. With that, I, I do believe that Councilmember Cunningham would like to make some remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Go ahead, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Your Honor. This has been a long time coming. It's a discussion that has been sensitive. It is a discussion that, that anytime you are separating out, it can come with great emotion. The response comes with great emotion. Anyone who knows me has known me in the last eight years to be happy, excited, optimistic about our region. Everyone knows me that all I want to do is help all the time. You've also listened to me, whether it was at a basketball game, a golf course, over breakfast, pontificate about how we don't get our fair share of state shared revenues. And so often, that response is with a nod of the head and a smile and a Joe G. Whiz. That's true. We really should get them. And no one really ever talks about it after that. In 1998, we passed, the legislature passed a bill delineating how state shared revenues were dispersed around the state. State shared revenues are divided into three categories: vehicle license tax, TPT, state income tax. Those taxes are put into pots and distributed in forms of HERF and state shared revenues to cities and towns. And when they first did it, it went equally, by population, no questions asked. In 2000, there was an opportunity for cities to annex here in Tucson. And our mayor back then, it was actually a little bit earlier, I think it was more like ninety-six, our mayor back then, George Miller, said, "No, you should come into the city. We shouldn't support another town to compete with." And at the time, he was right, because at the time, it didn't affect our state shared revenues. At the time, he was trying to help Tucson and make the best course for Tucson. He told me many years ago before as he passed, "Be careful. Be careful that Tucson, the city, has some type of clout. Otherwise, we risk becoming a rotten urban core." We've seen that in different cities around the country, where the central city becomes irrelevant as sprawl and a ring around that city thrive. I don't want Tucson to suffer that fate, and that's why this policy is important. Moreover, around that same time in 1997, the county issued a $1.8 billion bond, a HERF bond, through some of those state shared revenues, but mostly through a minor uptick in property tax. To date, the county has the second highest property tax assessment in the state of Arizona. In 2017, that bond expired and created a $66 million cash windfall to the county's general fund. Sixty-two percent of county residents who live, who live in towns or cities, they live in Oro Valley, Morana, Sarita, Tucson, or South Tucson, pay into that fund. Yet, none of that, zero, is spent in those areas. That, that $30 million that they generate is spent only in unincorporated Pima County. So my question is, for those folks who said this is not fair to the people who live outside, is the Pago situation fair? And what recourse do I have other than to shoot my mouth off at breakfast or absolutely talk about it? For years, I've talked about it. Nobody's listening. Well, we're talking about it now. As far as state shared revenues go, in a memo dated April 30th, nineteen, 2021, County Administrator Huckleberry basically wrote a 21-page memo entitled "The Myths of State Shared Revenues," and he said that my $90 million estimation in lost state shared revenues is inaccurate. That's how much we lose, by the way, $90 million, according to a person that I know very well who wrote nine state budgets. That's who told me that. By the county's own admission in that memo, the actual lost gross revenue was $120 million. Not only that, even with his fuzzy math, it goes down to $50 million. So he still admits we lose $50 million. So I asked folks who say this is inequitable, how is that equitable? Basically, by having this many folks living in unincorporated areas, it doesn't cost us anybody. We had a speaker at the end who said, "We're gonna," we, we had a speaker tonight who said, "We're gonna incorporate into our own town." And I say, "That's great. You should absolutely do that, because in the proposal in front of you, you don't necessarily have to pay it." We have all kinds of different issues, but in this situation, the situation is we're on, it's just unfair. We're losing out for financial resources to the region from the state and the county, and they are resources which we, as Tucson residents, pay into. Someone once asked me, "Who's gonna stand up for folks when they are being treated unfairly?" Well, I'm standing up right now, because the two things that I just mentioned about the road bond and the state shared revenues are detrimental to our region and unconscionable. That being said, there were some things brought up tonight that I thought should be addressed. And I want to thank Supervisor Scott, one of the speakers, Mr. Papas, another speaker, Mr. Bucky, for coming forward and giving very thoughtful reasons, and that's, that's commendable. But I, I've gotta say that when you really look at kind of all the things that, that we're going into without this, we're really not taking a look at all the things. First of all, the city of Tucson has to protect the water supply. We can't enforce laws that, we can't enforce laws outside the city limits that address rainwater harvesting, that address gray water, that address any type of conservation. We can't, we can't set laws like that. So the only way we can help with conservation is by doing it in the city. It may surprise many county residents to know that we have a GSI fee that only city residents pay. So as of right now, average customer city residents pay an extra thirteen cents per CCF and an average of seven CCFs. We already pay more. That's something that they, that may surprise them. We do that to protect our water supply. We do that because we can put curb cuts in our roads. We do that because we can do all kinds of different things related to permitting and zoning. And that gets me to the next practice. They've been talking of, we've been getting criticism over the years for trading annexation for water. We actually don't. We trade zoning for water, and this has become a problem in Tancaverty Valley. We are doing too many sprawl projects out there. We actually need to have some type of designated area where that doesn't happen. But we can't do that without having some type of thing that says, "Hey, look, this is how it's gonna be with regard to the natural resources and what's fair." Finally, when we talk about all the other things, when a pipe bursts and we have to coordinate traffic control and street repair and law enforcement, it's much easier for our in-city utility to coordinate with other city departments than when it has to go outside and coordinate with the county or another city. That's just the truth of it. So at the end of the day, we can have a cost of service analysis, though we don't have to. It's important to remind folks that while someone came in and brought up different state statutes, they failed to remember that young, nineteen, the 1989 Arizona State Supreme Court, Young versus Phoenix, in which it specifically said, "Any city utility can, one, charge differential rates and, quote, glean a profit," end quote. Moreover, I've said many a times that I want to have some alternatives, especially for some of the folks who live in the outer, our, outer areas. I want to have some alternatives so people have recourse who have no choice. But we can't seek those options without having the differential rate first. It's a chicken and egg thing. Moreover, and, and this is, this is one of the things that I think has fallen on, out of the discussion, I put the fifty percent in to let people know that that's how much we can go up to, and it's still considered a reasonable rate. Under no circumstances do I have any intention of doing rate shock. One guy said it himself, "Five to $10 a month actually isn't, isn't a big deal. Just let me hook up my water." He makes a really good point. We're not talking about this great thing here or this great injustice. What we're talking about is something that should have been done forty years ago. In 1978, the Pima County had the opportunity to make us the regional water provider. Instead, they demanded that they took all the effluent and they would distribute the effluent as the regional provider. They took it from us, but now all of a sudden, they're conveniently saying they're not. As a matter of fact, prior to, to 1993, when Mr. Huckleberry became city administrator, he was part of the coalition that helped the Oro Valley incorporate so that we weren't the regional water provider. So I, that notion just isn't correct. As I said, I've been talking about this for many years. Energy costs, all those things notwithstanding, when you really think about the state shared revenue and, and the retired county bond debt, which is going into only incorporated county members when sixty-two percent of everybody else is paying it, when you really consider jacking up the price every single year for our jail board, when you really consider every single year that we have to, that we have the second highest property tax rates in the state, you really have to question yourself, why are we getting treated as city residents this way? The county decided two, a year, a year ago to build a $31 million park on an asset that has gone bankrupt twice. Not only that, they built that park a mile away from any resident of Tucson. No resident of Pima County lives within a mile of that park. I really question whether or not we're getting treated fairly and we're getting treated honestly. So now, I'm laying it out on the table. Let's have this discussion. But at the end of the day, we're still gonna be good neighbors and good partners, even if, even if county residents don't feel that way. In the end, you don't have to pay it. The vision here is that places like the Indian Ridge and Tucson Country Club could always annex in. Catalina Foothills can form a whole, a, a town. I mean, who doesn't want to be the Benjamin Franklin of Catalina Foothills? Sarita and Green Valley could merge, and all of a sudden, a lot of those state shared revenues would be coming into Tucson. Matter of fact, the neighborhoods who really kind of are a little farther west and don't want to be in Catalina Foothills or in, in, or what would be the newly founded town of Catalina Foothills would have the option to annex into Morana and Oro Valley. And I guarantee you that Morana Oro Valley would appreciate that. We have to build a region with a good vision. We can't build a region with a good vision where all we're doing is trading zoning for water and water for zoning and water for annexation. That doesn't work. All we're gonna do is have sprawl, and we will have that rotten urban core that George Miller so fiercely warned us of. This is my work. I'm not gonna be the most popular guy on this one, but this is the right thing to do. I'm not saying to do it because I want to stick it to county residents. I'm not saying to do it even to say that it'll increase conservation, which it will, even to say that it will help social justice, which it will. I'm not saying, I'm doing it because it's the right thing to do. It's honest policy for a great city and a great community. I want to listen to what my colleagues have to say, but I stand by this because I believe in it and because I believe it's right.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Fiumbras?
So, Madam Mayor, we pushed this back for two weeks, correct? We're discussing this, the public hearing?
Yeah.
I still think there's some questions to answer that we need to know. We need to have, where the funding is gonna go, which is generated, how much we're gonna generate. So I think we still need to have Tim and, and Mr. Kuzic come up with a plan and give us, look at some viable things that we look at. I'm concerned about our most needed, vulnerable citizens, not only in the city but in the county, that don't have the money, don't have computers, can't go to a website because they don't have a computer in their house, and they're monylegal. So that's a concern I have, and that approached me on this issue and talked to me about this issue. So that's the concerns I have and how it's gonna affect them. And the other thing is, we're still in a pandemic. People are concerned, and here we are, I don't even have a job, I can't even get my car fixed, and you're gonna raise water rates, which is the most important thing for us. I understand that, but we gotta be concerned about some of these things and come up with a better plan. And, you know, our own agent, our own group, CWAC, voted not to do this, benefited to look at it longer. So then we have to look at these things, Madam Mayor, and get some more answers, and hopefully by the 22nd, the city manager and our water people will have these answers for us. And send those questions in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fiumbras. Councilmember Kozaczek?
Thanks. I have just real briefly a couple of questions. I have a lot of respect for Belinda Oden, who made some comments earlier tonight, and so I'd like Chris Avery between now and our next meeting to answer her, she, she said a Tucson Code 27-32 and ARS 9-511.01. If you could respond, Chris, you're our water attorney, to her questioning of those two statutes? If you could respond, Chris, you're our water attorney, to her questioning of those two statutes. Tim, oh, and also one more thing for Chris, and this might be a Mike Rankin one. There were a lot of calls tonight for us to cancel debt. There are, I believe there are issues with respect to bond funding and cancellation of debt. I'd like an answer on that before we get back as to what that option really exists. Tim, I am interested in a cost of service analysis. I understand all the policy decisions that, you know, that we make. But people have raised the issue of cost of service. And when we began this conversation, there, as I recall, there was, there was a, at least a suggestion that it costs us more. But Belinda mentioned Savano and some of the new areas out in the southeast side that when I asked these questions about lift fees five years ago, over five years ago, the answer was, no, actually, because our infrastructure is so well-built out, there are pockets in the city, within the city limits, that it costs us more to serve than out in unincorporated Pima County. So I'd like you to answer that as well as the, everybody, I believe, pending the answer to Belinda's questions about those two statutes, believes that this is legal. One of the questions I've got, though, is that other peer cities that do it, some people have suggested that the new differential rates for peer cities have been charged on new development and not on existing customers. And so I'd like you to get, do a little more research into that and let us know whether or not that's correct or whether or not there is precedent for charging differential rates on existing customers as opposed to new development. And that, those are just some of the questions I've got. But yeah, I'm glad we're taking another couple of weeks because this is a complex issue. Paul, everybody is all over incorporation, state shared revenues. I don't think this is going to be a big spur for people to annex. And if anything, it'll probably be more of an irritant. But if it encourages incorporation, great, we've achieved the same goal. But those are some of the questions I've got. Thank you.
Councilmember Ulrich?
Thank you. You know, I think Paul's points really resonated with me, especially with regard to, you know, and the notion that cost is part of what must govern how we serve this service area. We're the Water Utility Board. Stewardship is a whole added layer of responsibility that we have tried very hard to get right. And we have, I think, demonstrated that as the Water Utility Board, in collaboration with the county, we're getting it right. We've done some extraordinary things to the extent that even Phoenix turns to us to wheel their water into our infrastructure in order to draw down their full cap allocation. So, you know, I would hope that everybody in this dialogue try to understand that what's driving, at least from my perspective and in being at this table for a dozen years, we're trying to get water stewardship right, we're trying to serve the region well, and yes, we are advocating for the city of Tucson. Because if Tucson does not do well, this region will not do well. And over the years, regionalism and the notion of being fair across the entire region has, has been an argument that has, has been used to the detriment of the city at the heart of this region. And so it's our job at this table to do two things, I think. To make the, the needs of the residents of Tucson very clear and to serve as the Water Utility Board with great integrity and stewardship. So the questions that have been raised by the speakers in the hearing, as well as colleagues at the table, we do need the answers. And I believe that allowing for more time for dialogue, we are going to, we're going to get, get to the right decision on this. I just, I just want to emphasize again the driving motives. And, and that Tucson's the city of our region. It's all of our city. And we should all want the city to do well as well as our water stewardship. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ulrich. I do want to add a couple of thoughts into this conversation. I want to support this, the direction that Councilmember Cunningham has put on the table. I feel that it's important that we, it is about time that we've had this conversation, frankly. I heard the speakers earlier today that talked about concern about our droughts and talked about concerns regarding the residents of the city of Tucson, supporting those residents outside of the city of Tucson in unincorporated areas where the citizens of Tucson really cover, through the general fund, any outside investment that needs to be made to our water utility. Perfect example, we had a press conference today about PFAS. In 2012, mayor and council made a decision to use our general fund to build a facility, our AOP facility, to remediate 14 dioxine. That came from our general fund to the tune of more than $14 million, all supported by city of Tucson residents, where unincorporated residents do not have to contribute to our general fund. We are frankly living in different times. It's no longer 1974, or '77, I think it is. It's no longer 1977. We're living in one of the longest droughts in Arizona. Climate change is happening. We are seeing wildfires all over the state and throughout the southwest. And things have to change. There are systems of inequity that have survived more than 400 years. And a lot of people come to me and say, the city of Tucson is not playing nice regionally. What I can say to that is that the city of Tucson needs to advocate, and, and the elected officials in the city of Tucson, we need to advocate for equity. We need to advocate for systems change. And we need to make sure that we're preparing ourselves as a region for what's coming down the pike in terms of droughts and climate change. I support differential rates because we have to make sure that we are preparing ourselves for this water conservation ethic that we need to continue pushing on. And so I also agree that we need to listen to not only the residents of the city of Tucson, but Tucson water ratepayers and do what is fair. But we need to act now, and we need to make sure that we're, we're doing this for conservation, that we're sending an equity signal. I agree with the speakers earlier today that we need to make decisions as, as to how we're going to use these funds, I believe, in making sure that the low-income program is expanded throughout Pima County, that we create the opportunities for Pima County residents that are low-income to apply for the low-income program. I believe that we should use some of this money, whatever is generated, to create climate resiliency and to forgive the COVID-19 pandemic debt that many people are still concerned about, and that would be inclusive of unincorporated Pima County residents. I agree that we should keep the public hearing open so that those that couldn't speak today, our colleagues on the board of supervisors, and anyone else that wants to show up on the 22nd can give us their input. So with that, Councilmember Cunningham, I see your hand up again.
Your Honor, does any of my colleagues have anything else to share? I guess that might be my first question. All right, Your Honor, I prepared, based on the discussion we've had tonight, I prepared a motion. I move we keep the public hearing open through the meeting of June 22nd. I further direct staff to return to that meeting with analysis of options 1, 4, 6, and 7. I'd like them to include in this analysis the projected revenues, the impact to typical water bills, and a comparison of these options to the differential rates charged by other water providers. Additionally, please describe how these waters can be used to support the following. Expanding the low-income, and expanding the low-income service and other customer assistance programs, enhancing water resources management, and improving infrastructure reliability.
Quarter 4, 6, and 7. I'm trying to find them, but I can't recall.
4, 4 is the 40% across the board. 6 is the 5, 10, 15?
And then 10, 20.
Yeah, 7 is 10, 20, 30. And 1 is, I believe, 15 flat or 10 flat?
10 flat.
Okay, thanks.
All righty, so there is a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All righty, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all so much. And to those individuals that didn't get to speak tonight, you will have an opportunity on the 22nd. You can also email the city clerk to make sure that we receive your input. And there's always call to the audience as well. So with, yes.
For the record, I'd like to ask that the people that were on hold tonight and did not get the opportunity to speak be given preference at the meeting on the 22nd.
Mr. Clerk, we can do that, correct?
Yes, Your Honor, we'll keep them at the top of the list for the next meeting.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Clerk, and thank you all for this good conversation. Then we move on to item 9.
Public hearing, City of Tucson Recommended Annual Budget for Fiscal Year 2022 Hearing.
City Manager's Communication Number 177, dated June 8th, is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the city manager's recommended fiscal year 2021-22 budget for the city of Tucson. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentation. Please come forward when I call your name and make your presentation. State your name, whether or not you live in the city of Tucson, whom you are representing, and whether or not you are a paid speaker. I believe for item 9. I lost my speaker. Hold on. I think, I think there is one speaker for item 9. And if Ms. Alexis Sosa? Here, Ms. Alexis Sosa?
Oh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Sosa, go ahead. You have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hello, and thank you for giving me time to speak. My name is Alexis Sosa. I live in Ward 3, and I'm not a paid speaker. I am here to voice my disagreement with the proposal to raise the budget for the Tucson Police Department. The city manager's office hastily put together a market analysis to try and justify a major funding increase to TPD as the economic effects of the pandemic linger. The city markets, the city's market analysis and corresponding reports are full of inconsistencies and methodological missteps. Furthermore, the city manager's report doesn't account for the lower cost of living in Tucson compared to other jurisdictions like Phoenix included in the study. The call to divest from policing and reinvest in community has been voiced loud and clear throughout the nation. Tucson is no exception. Policing and incarcerating members of our community do not, have not made Tucson safer. It's time to direct money squandered on policing back into our community. This means affordable housing, free and affordable health care, better wages, and a major redirection of funds into mental health services and harm reduction, to name a few. The city manager's office writes in preamble to next year's budget proposal that the budget is equitable, transparent, and participatory, but I have yet to see those claims made real. I urge you to reject the proposed budget and establish listening sessions to hear the public's concerns about the increased funding for policing. We have been voicing our concerns against tightened policing and will continue to do so. Defund the police. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sosa. I do not see any others listed to speak.
May I move for motion to close the public hearing?
Hold on, Councilmember Fimbras, I just want to make sure that I ask if there is anyone in the audience wishing to, to be heard on this item. All righty, if not, may I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
The move.
Second, there is a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The public hearing is closed. Tentative adoption of the fiscal year 21-22 budget is scheduled for later in this evening, which is in item 10. Mr. City Clerk, please read item, please read the heading for item 10.
Finance, Tentative Adoption of the Fiscal Year 2022 Budget, Resolution Number 23317.
City Manager's Communication Number 178, dated June 8th, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution 23317 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23317 relating to finance, adopting a tentative budget for the 2021-22 fiscal year and fixing times and places, confirming time and place to conduct a public hearing on said budget, to adopt the final budget in a special meeting, to fix time and place to determine the primary and secondary tax levies for said fiscal year, and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure?
Mayor, I motion to pass and adopt Resolution 23317.
I'll second that.
There is a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Just a clarification that that motion includes the $500,000 for Visit Tucson's film office?
Mr. Ortega?
Mayor, members of council, believe that that direction was given during the study session, but it, the actual budget does include the $500,000 for Visit Tucson.
Councilmember Santa Cruz?
Mayor, I just want to make sure that we're able to continue the discussion on the employee retention plan strategy at our next meeting and what we do with vacancies at the end of the year, starting the new fiscal year. So that's all I want to flag.
Mr. Ortega, what I understand is that what we're adopting tonight is the ceiling of the budget and discussion can continue to be had, correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
All righty, any other questions from my colleagues? Hearing none. Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mayor Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Ms. Ulik?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Kozachek?
Resolution 23317 passes by a vote of seven, zero. Item 11.
Annexation, River Terrace Annexation District Ordinance Adoption, ordinance number 11840.
City Manager's Communication Number 171 dated June 8th is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance 11840 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11840 relating to annexation, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Tucson, Pima County, Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title 9 Chapter 4 Arizona Revised Statutes by annexing thereto the River Terrace Annexation District property, more particularly described in the body of this ordinance.
What is the council's pleasure?
I move that we pass and adopt ordinance number 11840.
Second.
There is a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question, because there are three of these items running a roll, I believe.
This is the, yeah, this is the annexation.
Yeah. Is... Well, let me just ask. I'm not sure which item to ask the questions on because it relates to the site plan and maybe Linda Morales, if she's on the call, she's, I think, the Planning Center.
Yeah, I think that would probably go under the item 13, but I'm happy to have that come up now if that, if that's your preference, Councilmember.
It's just to clarify two things. First of all, the, the renderings that we've got appear to, well, they don't appear, they do cut off the, there's a, there's a walking biking path that connects the Loop to River Road. And the eastern boundary of the, of the annexation district and the project overlaps that. And I just want a clarification from Linda that the, that walking path is going to remain open after the development. It's the only, if you don't use this one, then you can't get to the Loop until you get over to Hacienda del Sol, which is a half mile off the road.
Yeah, and I see Linda Morales is on. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kozachek, absolutely, that trail will remain in place. That's a key element to allow the public to be able to continue to access the path as well as they can get through our proposed commercial area as well. But there is a piece of that near River Road that does overlap onto our property, and that would be dedicated to the county to continue that path as a public right away.
Okay, thanks. I'll just save the other question until we get to the right number, sorry.
Okay. All righty, so there is a motion in a second, I believe. Any further discussion on this particular item? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Ms. Ulik?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Kozachek?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Ordinance 11840 passes by a vote of seven, zero. Item 12.
Zoning C152101, establishing original city zoning for River Terrace Annexation District, County SR and CR1 to City CR and RX1. Ordinance adoption, extension of the major streets and routes designation and scenic corridor overlay zone. Report from zoning examiner, ordinance number 11838.
City Manager's Communication Number 169 dated June 8th is received into and made part of the record. This is a request to establish original city zoning within the River Terrace Annexation District located on the south side of River Road, approximately a quarter mile east of Hacienda del Sol. The original city zoning will also include the extension of the major streets and routes overlay and scenic corridor overlay around, along River Road within the River Terrace Annexation District. The zoning examiner and staff recommend approval of SR and RX1 zones and extension of the major streets and routes overlay and scenic corridor overlay along River Lo, River Road within the River Terrace Annexation District. Is the applicant present or representative present?
Madam Mayor, Mike Chakowski, the City of Tucson, representing the City of Tucson, is for the original city zoning.
All righty, is a representative of the, of the applicant present, or Mike, are you playing that role today?
For the original city zoning, I'll be the applicant, ma'am.
Okay, are you agreeable to the proposed requirements?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance 11838 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11838 relating to zoning, establishing original city zoning in the area located on the south side of River Road, approximately one quarter mile east of Hacienda del Road in KC 152101, River Terrace Annexation District, Pima County SR and CR1 to City of Tucson SR and RX1, together with the extension of the major streets and routes planned designation and scenic corridor zone overlay and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure?
One question, since this lies within my area, and I think this is part of what's confusing about having three consecutive items. We're approving the original zoning, and then the next item is a rezoning. So the sequencing of this can be confusing, so I'm not sure if, who could just answer the purpose of starting with the original zoning and then moving into a pad and rezoning?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Ulik, you're right, this is one of those items where it's an annexation and a rezoning combined. And in order, before you can move to a rezoning, by statute, we have to establish the original city zoning, which we can only do after we've actually approved annexation of the property into the city.
Okay.
All, although interrelated. And the idea is that the applicant for the rezoning, for the PAD, is annexing into the city with this PAD zoning. We have to go all through all three steps sequentially in order for it to be.
Thank you, Mike, and I appreciate it, and I do appreciate to the, the inclusion of the scenic corridor overlay and, and attention to the details there. So I move that we pass and adopt ordinance number 11838.
Second. There is a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Ms. Ulik?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Kozachek?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Ordinance 11838 passes by a vote of seven, zero. Item 13.
Zoning C92104, River Terrace Planned Area Development, RX1 and SR to PAD. City Manager's Report, Ordinance Adoption, ordinance number 11839.
City Manager's Communication Number 170 dated June 8th is received into and made part of the record. This is a request to rezon property located approximately a quarter mile east of the Hacienda del Sol Road and River Road intersection, and the total site area to be rezoned is 7.84 acres. The zoning examiner and staff recommend approval of the PAD zoning and adoption of the ordinance. Is the applicant or representative present?
Madam Mayor, I'm Linda Morales with the Planning Center, representing the owner and the developer.
Thank you, Linda. Are you agreeable to the proposed requirements?
Yes, we are.
So, Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance 11839 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11839 relating to zoning, amending zoning district boundaries in the area located approximately one quarter mile east of the Hacienda del Sol Road and River Road intersection in KC 92104, River Terrace Planned Area Development, RX1 and SR to PAD 41 and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the request for rezoning as recommended by the zoning examiner and pass and adopt ordinance number 11839.
I'll second that.
There is a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I will just note that we are hearing more from people, and I, so I do suspect there may be some questions with regard to traffic and, and other items that are now coming forward. But I, I believe the zoning examiner and the process was quite thorough in assessing the, the impacts and the, the nature of the path that's being proposed. But I, I do think we may hear some other questions. I see hands going up.
Councilmember Cunningham, and then Councilmember Kozachek.
So, this is just what we talked about. An annexation for zoning, and, and in this case, I think it's a good thing for the city, it benefits the city. But this encompasses the whole, the whole discussion. And I think that this project will be good, and, and it, it consists, and if you look at the south bank of the river and, and Ward Three, congratulations on all the due diligence with this. But again, this is part of that whole discussion. I, I didn't want to have comments about annex for, annexation for zoning, and then us do one right after and me and not say at least something, so that's all, that's all I have to say about them.
Councilmember Kozachek?
Yeah, thanks. I don't have questions about transport, about, about parking or traffic as much as, because that, because River Road at this point is, is four lanes, it's wide, it's, you know, that's, that's not, it's not going to be a capacity issue. But my questions are more along the lines of the actual scale of what's being built. Karen, you mentioned scenic corridor overlay, and I don't know what that means, so maybe you can help me understand that. But between Alvernon and Campbell, there's nothing close to the scale of this. The single-family residences, there's a little heart institute that's about two stories in the office area, there's a hospice that's about two stories in the office, but nothing else close to this. And so where are the five stories going to be going in relation to River Road versus the Loop and, you know, Mike, Mike, so, and then how does, Karen, I don't understand the scenic corridor overlay, so maybe how does that play into this whole design element, too?
Yeah, and I won't pretend, I won't pretend to be the expert, and I know Linda and, and our PDSD folks are, are here to help answer. But, but I, I think that the scenic corridor has been so critical in, in maintaining view sheds as well as sort of controlling signage, there are different parameters around the, the corridors so that it retains really the beauty of that corridor and protects some of those elements. But I would let Linda and, and our PDSD team answer your more specific questions with regard to setbacks and the contours of the project.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Ulik, I would love to, to field that question. So as far as the scenic corridor, we, we did maintain the 30-foot natural landscape border. That would be enhanced in places because it's not, it's, it, there is some good vegetation there. It could use some enhancement as well to make it really a nice entry to this project. But we've also stepped the heights so that the highest allowed building heights are actually toward the, the southeast portion of the site, and that's actually the, the part that steps down toward the River Park. The higher portion of the site is toward the west and, and toward River Road. So it does kind of fall off toward, toward the river. And so we have the, the three-story, if you will, the, the, the 40 feet of building height that is where the residential area is in the concept plan, that is closer to River Road. And then as you go down toward the river paths where the, they converge and where the bridge comes over the Rito to go to the south, that is the opportunity that we see to kind of go vertical on that. And, you know, to Councilmember Cunningham's point, this actually isn't, isn't necessarily a water for annexation or, or zoning for annexation kind of thing. It's so much as, one of the four parcels of this is already in the city of Tucson. It was a zoning we did a few years back, actually when Councilmember Ulik was in office before. And it was for an, an office zoning, and, and unfortunately, they marketed that for that typical, that type of use for several years and didn't get any traction on that. So adding these other parcels in and consolidating this into a more of a mixed-use parcel, we believe will, will bring more opportunity for this mix of uses. We really wanted to make this an urban-style project. And Councilmember Kozachek, you're correct, there aren't a lot of other vertical elements along this, this, but there is a three-story condo project just to the east of, closer to Campbell, east of the new assisted living, I guess. And, and that's been a successful project. It's again tucked back away from the road toward the river. And so it, it, you don't even see it really as you go by. It's, it's a, it's kind of, you know, like I said, back away from there as our project would be, too, where the, the higher buildings would be back to the back. And, I mean, this is really our, the, an infill type of development. It completes the Tucson up to River Road all the way from here, all the way to Campbell. And it, it presents an opportunity for more of an urban-style living and having some services. And one of the things that excites me about it is that it services on the Loop. And we just don't have that many opportunities where bikers and cyclists and walkers can, bikers and cyclists, cyclists and pedestrians can walk right off the Loop and have those opportunities for dining, grab a cup of coffee. For people that maybe office there or, or work there, have a retail shop, can, can go on and off of the Loop that easily. And so I'm really excited, and I think that's something that will enhance the users on the Loop or their user's experience along the Loop.
So you're, you're right that there is a significant grade change between River Road and as you get closer to the Loop. And so I don't know if you'll be able to see this, but is this east where the height is?
Correct.
Got it. All right.
That is good.
Thanks. Until we go.
I was going to share my screen, but that was much more effective.
It was, it was quicker, that's for sure.
Yeah, quicker is the term, I suppose.
Well, quite honestly, I think Steve and I probably frequent this part of the Loop a lot. I think I've seen you out there, Steve, you and I. And so I, I, you know, I, I even visually was thinking what, what would the view shed be along the Rito and from the Tucson Racquet Club and, you know, that entire area. You know, it's an area that a lot of people frequent and care about, and we want to make sure it's done right. And I'm, you know, optimistic that this will, this will work well within that, that landscape.
Thank you, Councilmember Ulik, and thank you, Ms. Morales, for, for your thorough responses. So we have had discussion, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We are going to roll call now.
Ms. Ulik?
Aye.
Mr. Kozachek?
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Ordinance 11839 passes by a vote of seven, zero. Thank you so much, Ms. Morales, and congratulations, and thank you for joining the city of Tucson.
Thank you all. We're excited about this project. We appreciate your support.
Thank you. Item 14, this item has been continued at the request of staff. Item 15.
Adjournment?
Council will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, June 22nd at 5:30 PM. Thank you all so much. Enjoy the rest of your week.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.